Hi, Ron. Hi, Jack. Hi, Jack. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? I can't hear you. Oh, I can hear you now.
I can hear you, Debbie.
I can hear you. Thank you.
My video is frozen.
Yeah, you're just, I just see your name, Ron.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now you're there.
Jack, there is a distinct message in the boxes piled behind you.
Right.
I was hoping to have about 90 seconds at the beginning of the meeting to disclose what's happening.
I heard what was happening and I'm really sorry about that.
I am too. It was unexpected. No intention of doing this when I ran for council. I was looking forward to working with you guys. But it's just the right time in my life and my wife's life to do this. So it's happening much faster than we ever anticipated. Our heads are spinning in circles and then up and down and then the opposite circle. And it is what it is.
Are you selling the house?
The real estate agent was here today and she, so yes, the answer is yes. But not to a builder to tear it down.
Good luck with that.
Well, I wouldn't think your house would be a teardown because it's a unique, you know, it's a unique property.
It is very unique and if any of you haven't seen the inside, I'd love to show it to you before we leave.
So you know, you know, Jack, that I looked at your house before you, before you bought it. And I think, I think it got sold before we could put it into the contract.
Wow.
Because wasn't that, that was in 1999, right?
98.
Yeah, 98, right, right. And also, by the way, Jack, I want to tell you, remember my cousin Warren claiming that you and Vicki knew? He died on Friday.
That's a shame. That's a shame.
You remember him? Didn't you know them in Columbia?
I don't.
Didn't you know them in Columbia?
I don't think so.
You lived in Columbia, right?
Yes, 110,000 people. It's much bigger than Somerset.
I think Vicki knew, I think Vicki, I think Vicki knew them.
She knew more, she knew more people than I did. That is accurate.
I think Vicki knew my cousin and her husband and he passed and she has, she has dementia. It's sad. Very sad. Okay, I see that the time is 5:01. I want to call the work session over and turn it over to our distinguished new council president.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining in on this work session. We have the draft agenda that was forwarded by Matt. I received some comments and feedback from individuals on some additional things we're going to want to talk about. My goal here is to cover everything and position us to have a successful town meeting on, in the first week in July. So I'd like to make one modest change to the agenda just to start with. As I imagine all you've heard, we're going to be losing Jack. Jack is heading out to California. So we're going to have to replace Jack. I understand that the council can, that there's a process to do it. I just wanted to get this out on the table so everyone knows we're going to need to replace Jack in the near future. And not to put you on the spot, Mayor, but do you have any comments on, on how you would like to proceed or?
Well, okay, so remember, unlike a lot of other jurisdictions where the mayor would nominate or appoint somebody to a vacancy, in this case, it's totally a council decision.
Okay.
So, so I mean, I would be happy to help recruit someone. I, I think it's going to be a huge challenge to find someone as talented and experienced as Jack, frankly. Because as we know, as we know, that, you know, as I've stated many times before, I, I don't think there was a more engaged citizen in the town than Jack when he decided to run. But, but on the other hand, there, you know, that was then and this is now. So I think that, I think we will, I'm sure we will find somebody to move forward in. But what's the timetable? Jack, have you announced your, what are you, because this is your decision and when you?
You can see the moving boxes behind me. The Packers were here today. They expect to pack up the truck in a week and will probably fly out a day or two later. So Jeffrey, I will give you a written confirmation or a written resignation letter. And to be honest, it's your call whether you want me to stay on the meeting tonight or not. I will definitely stay on the meeting, but whether you want me to vote tonight or not.
Well, you have a, absolutely, you should vote. You're, you're, you're a serving member.
Thank you.
I mean, I would say, I, you know, this is kind of a unique situation here, but I, I don't think you, you know, why don't you wait to resign until we have, till the council has found a candidate? Because you're still technically, you're still a resident of Somerset, right?
I think until my house is closed. So that's probably a few months from now.
So.
Good. So it might have some flexibility, some schedule flexibility.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to spend a lot of time tonight on that.
That's true.
But, but, you know, again, as, as I told you on the phone, and I would be happy to say no, you know, I, I, you contributed so much to the town in the time that you've lived here. And I think it's wonderful that you've elected the council and you will, when you, when, when you do leave town, you will of course be a prominent member of the Somerset Alumni Association. And, and so, thank you and, and I think you're making the right decision for you. I would probably do the same thing. I know Debbie would. Remember, she was talking about how beautiful it is at, so, so, so congratulations and we'll, and we'll all talk offline about this.
Yes, thank you very much, Jeffrey.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. The next item is the stormwater study recommendations. There are two recommendations for us to discuss tonight. One is the draft ordinance and the other is their proposal for a support contractor. This, this could be the, the most significant item for us to talk about tonight. I hope we could talk about it for maybe 20 minutes or so. And then go through some, the remaining items in the agenda and then assuming we'll have time remaining, we can come back to it. So the first item is the draft ordinance. The stormwater study committee provided recommendations which our town attorney, Ron Bolt, has, you know, codified or put into language that would work in our code. That's been provided to everyone. But I have to share with you that for an interim code update, or you know, for, for code update that's based on an interim assessment from the stormwater study committee, I'm concerned that this perhaps goes a bit too, too far. It's, and, and that's what I think we should talk about here. But before we do, does anyone have any questions for Ron Bolt about how he codified the recommendations? And, you know, he had to make some judgment calls on what to include or not include. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Ron, for doing such a quick job. I know it was, you weren't given much time and I appreciate you laying it out the way you have done. So no comments at this time.
Okay, any other comments or questions to get us started here?
I guess I would like to know, Steve, what you said about, you think it's gone too far. I know this is the right point to talk about that, but I'd like to know your thoughts on that.
Oh, I, I'll get to that in just a moment. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to dominate the conversation. I wanted to get people a chance to ask some questions of Ron first.
Yeah, before we go down that part, maybe, Ron, if you don't mind, just walking us through like I think you did previously. And I think it was a bit rushed and truncated. Maybe a quick walkthrough, if you don't mind, what you were able to tackle, what you felt you had to kind of keep out, what's a question mark on your mind? And that might sort of get us all on the same page, if you don't.
Absolutely. And does everybody have that in front of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Would it be helpful for me to share my screen with it on there or does everybody have it in front of them that?
I have it.
I have it. My preference is to see everyone.
Please share your screen.
Okay.
I think the speakers still show up in little blocks.
All right, all right, all right.
Okay, so the first judgment call I made in looking at the committee recommendations was the scope of the requirement. And the explanatory text in the report indicated to me that initially it should only apply to new construction projects and should not apply to additions or excavations and the like. But then elsewhere in the report, there was an indication that if the project disturbed 5,000 square feet or more, then the requirements should apply. But I stuck with the new construction as the trigger for this initial draft. By way of explanation, it might be worth noting that when you disturb 5,000 square feet or more in the project, then you need a county sediment control permit. And then the stormwater drainage requirements apply at the county level. So, you know, that's, that's a useful trigger as well, but you can decide what the trigger should be at the town level. And again, I stuck with new construction. Any questions on that before we?
A quick, quick 101 follow-up. New construction is easily defined, is understood and defined in the code or elsewhere.
Yes, yeah, yeah. New construction means basically demolishing the existing house and building a new house. And so, you know, what, what this ordinance would do would, would say if, if you're doing that, if you're tearing down a house and building a new one, then you need to attend, yeah, thank you, Matt. Let me see. Yes, stop right there, please, Matt. So you'd have to obtain a town preliminary approval first, then get your county approval and then come back and get your town final approval. And that's something that was recommended in the report. Then you'd also have to attend a pre-construction meeting with the town manager so that the town manager could inform the applicant about town requirements with respect to stormwater and also tree removal and other code requirements. And then the meat of the, of the draft is on page five, if you could scroll down, Matt, to 14.
Clarification on the preliminary meeting.
Yes.
By putting it here, we would now require all new construction to have a preliminary meeting, correct? Okay.
That's correct. Thank you. And then, yeah, down, down to 14. So borrowing the language from the report and recommendation and I edited it a little. A stormwater drainage plan would be required for new construction projects. And these would be the requirements for the plan. There'd have to be retention devices installed such as a rain tank or, you know, other device that captures water from all runoff from roof surfaces. And so we know how that commonly works. There are gutters and drains, obviously, on a house. And then those drains would be tied into the retention device that would capture the runoff from the roof. And the devices would have to be sized to capture all the runoff from a one-year storm event, which is defined as a storm resulting in at least 2.6 inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period. And then B, driveways and parking pads would either have to be constructed in a two-track design to limit the amount of driveway area that would be on a lot or of permeable material such as, you know, pavers that allow water to infiltrate. And then finally, if you're building a patio, you'd also have to provide a retention device for the runoff from that patio again for a one-year storm event.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Is the, is the patio, is that just if it's a new-built house or I want to build a new patio in my house?
Just if it's a new-built house. Yeah, these stormwater drainage requirements would only apply to a new construction project. And then this paragraph C would only apply if that new construction project includes a patio.
But why would we do that if a patio is a patio, whether it's a new house or an old house?
Well, the, the report and recommendation suggested that we start with this and, and apply the stormwater drainage plan requirements only to new houses. But for a phase two or in the future, the, the council might decide to require stormwater drainage plans for everything, including the building of a patio, the construction of a major addition or whatever else may be the case. And then, and then finally.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, I do have a question.
Yes.
I think your words were that this applies to a storm that at least 2.5 inches. What about a storm that's 2.4 inches? What, I mean, it seems like.
That's not a, that's not a one-year storm event. So, you know, that would not dictate the retention volume.
Okay, so if they had a rainfall of 2.4, then they don't have to worry about it. Well, no.
They would have, they would have a device on site that would capture 2.6. So they'd be better off, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's determining the ceiling, water volume ceiling.
Yeah, it's, it's determining the size of the retention device that must be installed.
Okay, so it should handle anything below that.
Yeah, anything below that would be captured. That's right.
Ron, just to be very clear, this on page five is very close in language to the stormwater committee recommendations on page three.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I, I, you know, tried not to change it too much.
Yeah, I have some questions on word choices, but I noticed that you tried to stay consistent with what they had said. And so I guess in subsequent drafts, we may want some precision because story.
Absolutely. This is, this is mostly just for discussion purposes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Frankly, as, as Steve has pointed out, you know, there, there needs to be some council discussion on the policy issues, you know, before I spend too much time drafting because.
No, 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 agree, agree.
You don't want to waste your money.
I wholeheartedly agree.
But also remember, everyone, that this is just to get it rolling and then it goes through a legislative process, which it doesn't have to, even if it, even if you decide to introduce it in July, it doesn't have to be voted in August. It could be voted in September if more time was needed for comment, or it could be reintroduced and voted on in October. So, so don't think that this is the end of the discussion about it. It's the beginning.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Better, better said than I, I did. So if, unless there are other questions, I can go to the other judgment calls I made. Okay, the second judgment call I made, the report and recommendation suggested that, you know, obviously the town would have to have a consultant help review stormwater drainage plans. That's commonly done in other towns. And the report and recommendation was to have the applicant reimburse the town for all those expenses that the town would incur. And that's, you know, generally not how it's done. Most towns recognize there's a cost of doing business, a cost of regulating, and so will impose permit fees to help offset the town's costs, but don't seek to recover all of the town costs because frankly, all of the town's costs would be rather high. You know, it, it could add another $2,000 or $3,000 to the, you know, the applicant's fee, which, which the council can discuss. Just in, in my experience, you know, it's, it's uncommon to pass on 100%. More common to pass on a much smaller percent. And, and there, you know, I recommended, we might want to hear from the town's building permanent administrator, Doug Loemeyer, on how much he thinks it would cost to implement. Luckily, he's a stormwater drainage engineer. He sits on the town of Chevy Chase water board and hears variances for the town of Chevy Chase's stormwater drainage ordinance. But he might be able to help the, you know, the council assess the administrative costs and burdens for implementing this program. So a, a big issue that the council needs to discuss is the sequencing of permit applications. This has been an issue that the council has discussed in the past. The report and recommendation was that, you know, there ought to be a town preliminary approval, then a county approval, and then a town final approval, which can be done, but it, it appears to me that that might be more administrative burden than the town wishes because that may mean you need two town hearings. It's more common in my experience for towns to allow concurrent applications or folks to apply to the town and the county at the same time. And, you know, I think the report and recommendation indicates, you know, we'd like them to get in front of the town first so that the town can explain all these requirements, you know, before the applicant potentially wastes a lot of money in a county approval that's not going to be sufficient for the town. I will say by comparison, in the town of Chevy Chase, where applicants are allowed to apply concurrently, you know, the, the engineers that put together these plans understand that they've got to comply with both and take that into account when they're designing a plan. And interestingly, there's one engineering firm, CAS Engineering, that seems to represent 99% of the applicants in the town. I, I don't know why, but maybe it's just word of mouth. Their owner helped write the town ordinance. So it may be worthwhile to reach out to CAS Engineering for, you know, for comments as well on, on what administration might entail. Or someone from the county, as the, you know, the mayor has suggested in the past.
Ron, could you say something about variance, how you treat it?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Steve.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I think, I'm confused. It doesn't seem like there's any variance allowed for concerning stormwater drainage.
Yeah, so, so right now, bottom of page five, thank you, Matt. Right now, when someone requests a variance, they can prove one of two things. A, that the proposed construction basically wouldn't interfere with sightlines of, of a neighbor and otherwise impact their enjoyment, interfere with light and air and the like. Or that strict application of the code would result in practical difficulties due to an unusual condition of the property. And that's in paragraph B, top of page six. That paragraph B is the common standard for a variance. What the town has in the code with respect to A is uncommon. It's a very low hurdle. Very easy to prove and it wouldn't apply to a stormwater drainage plan. So the, the edit there that I made was to apply A only to a variance for, you know, construction. And then B would apply to everything, including stormwater drainage requirements.
Okay, thank you.
For a stormwater drainage requirement, an applicant would have to show that there's an unusual condition of the property creating a practical difficulty. And the most common assertion is our clay soil won't allow a rain tank to percolate into the ground. It won't allow our rain barrel to draw down within 48 hours as the county requires, you know, so on.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Does anybody else have any questions before we start to discuss some of the issues raised by Ron or perhaps observed by individuals?
No questions. Thank you, Ron.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Then, then I'll jump in and sort of get back to, to Debbie's question. I think I think there are two areas that I believe we should consider recommending that our town attorney update this, this proposal. One is the sequence, as he discussed. And there have been a lot of discussions in the past about the desirability of a concurrent review process. I gather that, that there is some standard or common language available that Ron could recommend for a concurrent review process. And I would suggest that, that we consider that. And we don't have to take a vote on or anything right now, but just, just putting it out there. The other thing is this one-year storm event. So that figure of 2.6 inches comes from a state of Maryland document that, that talks about rainfall and that is the one-year storm event for Montgomery County. On average, we can expect one 2.1 storm of 2.6 inches every year in Montgomery County. But I think it's important to recognize. But I think it's important to recognize that right now, currently, the design standard that builders and homeowners are using is 1.5 inches. Because the current standard does not refer to the one-year storm event. It and, and I don't know how they came up with this 1.5.
Would you clarify when you say that standard? Is that a town standard you're talking about?
It's the county. 1.5 inches is the county.
The county standard refers to the design manual that is the Maryland Design Manual of 2009, and that is the one-year storm event, which is 2.6 inches.
But while we come through this many times, and I really don't want to get into an argument here, I, I, I think that it's a statement of fact that builders and homeowners use 1.5 inches. That's what Doug Lormar, our town engineer references. They might all be doing it incorrectly.
What's the standard in 2000?
Okay.
But it's not the standard since 2009.
Well, that's what all, that's what everyone is using is 1.5 inches today. And maybe they shouldn't.
Well, I think we can get an answer from the county permitting staff as to what standard they're using. So it's no need for an argument. We can get it from them.
Yeah, Rob, Robin, before we debate, Steve, are those are the two, your two?
Those are my two.
Robin, are, you're also a liaison with the Stormwater Committee. Maybe, maybe it would be good for the rest of us to hear your view on the recommendations and the ordinance as well.
Sure, right. I mean, there, really, there are two different pieces to it. One is the clear criteria that the Stormwater Committee referred to, which is the one-year green event standard and the permeable materials for driveways, et cetera. And the other is concurrent review. And they are equally important, is my concern. That is to say that we've got to have concurrent review to avoid the kind of session we have now, which is very hostile, the final approval. So what we've really got to do is have good input early on so that we can have a very roughly salutary final approval at the end.
So both of you are recommending the concurrent review, just to be, okay.
And then on the second piece, well, the second piece, I, I do want us to be absolutely clear on what the county standard is before we go any further because there's clear confusion here. And the, as I understand it, and as I've read the chapter 19, they refer explicitly to the, to design manual of the Maryland State, and that is the 2009 revision, and that is the one which sets the 2.6 inch standard. So I think they are on 2.6 inches, but I mean, we can't, shouldn't debate it here. We should go to the county permitting office and, and see what they're actually doing there. That's it. On the clear criteria, I, I think the criteria are clear and they're workable. So that, that's good. What bothers me, though, is what I call particularities. That is to say, we, patio is defined, but a swimming pool is not in this, and an outside kitchen is not in this. And hey, a fish pond is not in this either. And we certainly have swimming pools in recent applications. We've had outside kitchens in recent applications. And how far, we can't chase after every item. We have to think about total impermeable surfaces. I think that really has to be, we are.
So you're, just to be clear, sorry, your recommendation is don't specifically list these.
Right, I, I think we need, I, I, I'd go back to the Stormwater Committee and say, you, you've got to think about total impermeable surfaces. Otherwise, we're going to be chasing after every last device that's placed on our land or their land. But with all that said, I, I, these are a step in the right direction.
Okay, I have a quick comment on the overall question that we have before us. We're trying to get a quick interim language. And Ron, you did a fantastic job in taking the SSC's recommendations and putting it in the code language. But can we do something simpler? Maybe five sentences that say, we will not accept Montgomery County waivers as an interim. And then when the SSC comes out with their finals, we can debate the fine points of that. My concern is that it'll take us months to do anything interim, and that's not really interim. If there's something we can do quickly that gets something in the right direction with a paragraph or two in the code that's legally sufficient without having months of discussion and debate.
So my thought there was if we, if we just had a provision stating that Montgomery County waivers are, are not going to be recognized, then we have to have an underlining provision that has to be met. So the underlining provision that would need to be met could be the same as the county requirement.
Debbie, that's gonna go now, yes.
But then we'd have to think about how's that going to be administered in the practical sense? Because as I understand it, when someone goes through the county review, the requirement for treatment at the county level is the implementation of environmental site design techniques to the maximum extent practicable. And so, you know, the county's making a determination that, you know, we can, we can waive part of your retention or treatment requirement because anything else is not practical based on your site conditions. So then if the town is going to say, we disagree with that conclusion, we have to be able to say why we think additional environmental site design is possible. And then codify, you know, the actual requirement without getting into a battle of the experts, right? Because an applicant can say, well, the county engineers who are specialized say, this is not practical. And town, you're telling me it is practical? Well, if this goes to court, who wins? You know, and I, I wouldn't want to get into that sort of battle of the experts. I think it would be much cleaner and, you know, much better for the town if there were clear criteria to apply. You know, put a rain tank on your property that holds this much cubic volume of rainwater. You know, that's, that's simple to apply without any argument.
Okay, Ron, I completely agree with you, but many residents around here would like something interim to happen quickly. Your lovely language, I think, will take months to get.
Does it have to, Jack? I mean, I think we are on the same, I'm on the same page with you. I think we should, at, at two levels, we should act quickly. And I think we should act in, you know, consistent with the recommendations of the committee because these are town residents who have done their work, ran a survey, have done the thinking for us and have surfaced these recommendations. You know, that's part of the process. That's what we've signed up for. So I, I, I'm inclined to sort of build on their recommendations rather than deviate from that in the interest of time. And if time is the issue, then at least I'm personally committed to making this a priority for the next meeting. And we can go, we can sort of push to make it happen in the next few weeks instead of next few months.
I agree, except that there's lots of town socialization that's required for any kind of major change like this, so. Yes, I agree.
You know?
Yeah, let's get on it. Sure, yeah. Yes, I, I agree. We're on the same wavelength, Kabir.
I, I have a question of clarification, please. Am, am I wrong that I heard both Steve and Robin say that the permit process should be concurrent with the town and the, and the county? Because what I read in, in, what I think I read in, in the, in the report was that the, the Stormwater Committee doesn't want that. They wanted to come to the town, go to the county, come back to the town. Am I right? Am I wrong?
You're correct. On all counts.
So I want to know, Robin and Steve, do you see that differently than what the report says?
There are practical difficulties in doing what the Stormwater Committee says, as Ron went through, which is that we'd have to run two hearings, which are costly for the town. Running concurrent review, we do get across and have a chat with them without actually having to go through a hearing. And that's, I think, a better process.
Why couldn't we? And, and, oh, I'm sorry.
As I say, why couldn't we do something like, you come to the town first, then you go to the county, and if things haven't deviated, then we stamp it. You know, I, I, so we don't have to have a third hearing, but only have a third hearing if things have diverged. I don't know if that's practical or not. You know, I'm gonna just throwing it out there.
I think that could be done. I mean, a, a, another option would be if the goal is to get an applicant in front of the town early in the process so that we make sure an applicant is aware of all town requirements before they get too far into their, their design. We could have a requirement that would say, for example, you must file with the town within seven days of filing with the county. And as the committee recommended, we're not going to process your application, however, until you have this pre-construction informational meeting with the manager. So we'd get in their, in their mind early on, but then they could still proceed concurrently.
I think that respects the committee's request in the proposal.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, right. And Debbie, the problem with, you know, the, the third appeal just being stamping approval is that every application in recent years coming from the county for new construction has had a waiver attached to it, uh, which means that it would have to go to a full hearing. And unless there's a change in that behavior, we're going to end up with full hearings because of that waiver.
I see.
I should also flag that there is an advantage of this informational session before you file. I think that's what I understood in the language you put in the ordinance. I think that can be very helpful for, for applicants to understand the full scope of what they are getting into before they actually prepare the application.
Yeah, I, I should note, ma- maybe it goes without saying, but this is going to add expense for the town as well, because if I were Matt, I would want Doug or whatever water drainage engineer you retain at that meeting to help explain and, you know, talk through water drainage requirements.
And that would be the cost of doing business in the sense that the outcome we are seeking here is less, better stormwater management.
Right.
Right. I'd like to, so this has been a, a great discussion. And, and I appreciate the positive engagement. And my sense is that there's a great deal of respect for what the Stormwater City Committee has recommended. And we're going to want to advance it in some way sooner rather than later. What I'd like to do, if we have time, we can come back to this. I want to move on to the Stormwater Study Committee recommendation for a contract. Matt, can you bring that up?
Yes, one moment.
And for, for background, the Stormwater Study Committee, as I recall, did a, an open source solicitation. They only received one viable offer from the Low Impact Development Center. But it does reflect a competitive solicitation process.
Yeah, I mean, the, the study committee saw them as very qualified indeed, even though there was only the one proposal. And they found the proposal to be excellent. I think there were some slight modifications they wanted in the contract, which, Matt, did you show that to the council or not?
I don't know if I had seen that. Was that included in the?
Okay, I, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, remember tonight, all you're deciding is whether this is ready to go on the agenda. So you don't need to be debating a lot of things about it. But one of the things I want to say is that I think everyone knows how, how beneficial the Stormwater Study Committee has been to the town government and what an incredible job they've done. And I think one of the best things they've done is to identify to, for all of us, the, the serious nature of this problem, how widespread it is. And so I feel that even though, you know, when we put a dollar amount in the budget, we really had no idea what it was going to be. We just put in a placeholder. And so if anybody is concerned about the amount of the contract, I say that this is an investment in one of the most serious problems in the town, and is well worth the money because we cannot move forward and make decisions without this vital information.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's an excellent point that we're not voting on this right now. We're just seeing, do we agree that this package is ready to be considered in a formal council meeting? And, and I think it is. Is there any discussion or concerns?
I would love to, is this the full proposal from them, from this group, LID? This is what they gave us, gave the Stormwater Committee? Did they, for example, include any samples of work they've done? You know?
Yes, they, they gave illustrations of the work in the proposal.
So, so let me say for that is,
Yeah.
Let me say for that is that in preparation for the, for the town meeting, first of all, we like the contractor, the vendor, to always attend the meeting. And this would be a great opportunity, as Councilmember Kumar is talking about, is to request the information that you're going to want that we don't have right now.
It, it, it looks, Kabir, it looks like the full proposal is there, and they give examples of Bourbon Heights and Mount Rainier and Hyattsville as places where, and they illustrate the project.
Okay.
But, but if Councilmember Kumar or anybody wants more information, please let us know what that would be, and then Matt can ask them so that they'll, they will be prepared.
One example of a previously completed study report would be good to have as part of the package.
Right, so Kabir, you're asking for a sample of a full report, a full deliverable, not just an extract like we see.
If they can share that, if it's public, if their clients have permitted that, I think that would be helpful.
I think that's a great request.
I agree too.
So with that, I think we're in agreement to add this to the agenda for the the next council meeting, and we can ask I guess Matt to invite the contractor and to request that material so it can be provided as a read ahead to council members.
A, a quick clarification on process there. Is it possible to have the contractor come? We have a discussion and then the contractor leaves. We ask them a question and then the contract leaves and then we can have a discussion.
That's a good question for the town attorney.
Yes, technically, the.
It's a public hearing. It's not, the tape will be available to them.
Yeah, I mean, they.
But it might just allow us to be a little bit privater.
Is it, would that be a situation, Mr. Town Attorney, where the council would go in executive session?
So closed session would be permitted if the town could demonstrate that its, its bargaining position would be prejudiced before.
I'm working for this situation, just wondering, y- 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 you know, in some instances, it might make sense for us to do that. Anyway, thank you.
But I think, isn't it true, Mr. Town Attorney, that, that it's a public document and any council member can call the, i- is it permissible, permissible for any council member to call the, the contractor and ask questions?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
So, so Councilmember Kumar could do that or anybody in advance of the meeting. Maybe that would be the best way, Councilmember Kumar, to achieve your goal.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Good discussion. Next topic area is the Environment Committee recommendations. I think these are two straightforward documents that the committee recommends the town mayor sign on to. One is an international fossil fuel nonproliferation. Statement and the other is the Sierra Club Maryland Mayor's Clean Energy Pledge. There's no actual. You know, specific action that is tied to either of these. These are really statements of vision and commitment. And. I would think we would, we would want to, or certainly. The documents stand on their own and I don't think there's anything additional required for us to consider them at the meeting. I would recommend they be put on the consent.
And let me add that this is something that I could sign in my personal capacity. Like any of you could sign to any organization. But I think the Environment Committee wanted it be known that the town council as representing the town residents. Endorses this.
Yep.
Agreed. Good for consent agenda.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Sorry about that one, I sort of talked over you by accident there. The next item is pickleball. Which I understand a tennis subcommittee has looked into and there are some questions about a demonstration project. Can you give us an update, Matt?
And I'm here in case.
This is not for, this is a closed session.
Sorry.
Madam Chair.
I was just saying, I'm here if you have questions.
Thank you.
I wrote up a little memo giving sort of the background info for the council. I think it lays it out for you relative. Excuse me, relatively clearly. The tennis committee is. Looking into the issue of pickleball, which was raised on one of the local listservs. Various people having some interest in it and so. They are seeking the council's approval to host a demonstration. And also to have the town attorney do a little bit more research into any potential restrictions. That the town may have on limiting the use of Capello Park in the basketball court area.
Okay, so I just want, I just want to say a few things. First of all, the, the. The advocates of pickleball have reached out to me. And I discussed with them the idea that I don't really think that. The tennis players in town, the majority of them are interested in putting pickleball at the tennis court. And so what I told them was that it would be important if the town decides they want to invest in. Having pickleball as a service, that they need to, you know. Publicize their initiative and to to try to engender public support for it. Now, they had mentioned about having a demonstration that I guess somebody from the county was going to come. And so I said to them, and they were going to pay for it, and I'm like, you don't need, you know, this is something that the council should decide. Whether to go forward and the demonstration they proposed to be at the. At the basketball court, which is not under the jurisdiction of the tennis committee. So, and also the, basically, the, you know, we're closed for public events except. For whatever the council decides is an exception. So the whole idea now is to decide as a council where you want to go with the pickleball idea. I also told them that, you know, perhaps the best way to do it would be to have a separate pickleball court. Which would require, you know, a big investment that maybe would eventually be in a future capital budget. But this is just the beginning of the idea. You know, there were, there were a few people on a listserv that isn't. Regulated. We don't really know who, you know, how many people are in, you know, there, there's no way of knowing right now how many people in town. Are interested until there is an opportunity for people to comment and. And so I don't think it's a bad idea for the council to approve a demo at the, at the. Wherever they want it to be, but it's up to you, not anybody else, to decide whether this should move forward.
Any thoughts?
Well, yeah, first of all, on our outside spaces, I think we should open them. The Governor Hogan is removing the state of emergency in Maryland on July 1st. And I think we like a basis beyond that for closing our outside facilities. Maybe even for closing our inside facilities, but there is, there is no evidence really of transmission outside of COVID. There is.
I think that, I think that the plan is to put something on the agenda about the opening so that the council. Approves whatever you want to be done.
Well, maybe we can get that on the agenda of the June meeting. So that we can open the.
Why?
Open them, but it's, you know, for July meetings, or yeah, right.
Yep, that's a good idea.
The second point, yeah, right, okay. I'd be in favor of a demonstration at the basketball court.
I agree. And can we talk about this for a second, about the pickleball on the, on the basketball courts versus the tennis courts versus? You know, the street, I don't know. Pickleball is tremendously popular all over this county and probably all over, okay? Yeah, we had, we had a bunch of people, you know, saying they were interested in the unofficial listserv. We could do something more official to ask the question. I think starting with the demonstration is a great idea. And to see where it goes, but I. And I don't know if I'm short sighted and says, why can't we share the tennis courts with us? Why can't they share the tennis courts? And that could be totally, I'm out of turn here because I don't know tennis numbers. I don't know how many of our residents have, you know, tennis permits. I don't know how many of our. Residents bring guests to the tennis courts and is it like one resident and three guests? I don't know any of this.
Well, well, that's, that's, okay, that's, I was trying to, what I'm trying to say now is that. I would suggest that you're in an information gathering period before you even. Because this is basically a new initiative that you will have to decide whether you want to go forward with. I personally don't think that anyone would want it to happen at the tennis court because I think that. We have a lot of people, enough tennis players that want to use those three courts. But all this, we don't know, we don't know, there's not enough information to make any kind of decisions. And all I'm suggesting is that you allow a, and pay for, because I think it's a minor cost involved. Allow and pay for a demonstration and then, you know, it'll move from there. Maybe there isn't a lot of interest, but we don't know now.
Right, well, I think we should explore it and, you know, and if tennis courts don't make sense, then find, we have a big town, maybe we can. Find another place to put it. That's just, but I think we should explore it. Can I say one thing or not? Or Matt, can you tell them what you're gonna?
No, this is a work session. Madam Chair, this is a work session for the council only.
Okay, Matt, will you at least tell them that we're doing the report? You said you would.
Yeah, that's, that's included in the memo that the, that the committee has been. Doing interviews with essentially all the local area clubs to get more information on.
Right.
Pickleball and whether they, they have some organization of pickleball at their various facilities.
Steve and Jeffrey, for the upcoming council meeting, we will be discussing whether we are approving. A new budget item for paying for the demonstration of pickleball. Is that what is on part of the discussion here?
The proposal is, the proposal is to allow, would be to allow. A pickleball demonstration at the basketball court and to pay for the cost of, and Matt will find out what.
So it's, it's the budget and the use of the space with it for the demonstration.
And then to, and to authorize it to be publicized by the town's communication.
Okay, so I think it would be great to have that on the agenda from my end, and I think it would be great to have the tennis committee's. Analysis as part of that conversation.
I think it's great that they did that, that announcement, that they gathered all that information. Let's, let's look at it and figure out what to do with it.
And the, and the advocates, I believe the advocates for pickleball are going to be writing an article for the Town Journal this month.
Just, just that, thank you.
But we do know that both Jeffrey and Debbie are for pickleball, so that's.
No, I didn't say that. No, I didn't say that. I'm actually not interested in pickleball.
I'm in favor of gathering as much information as possible.
I'm with Jeffrey on this.
I'm with Jeffrey on it too, and I do think the demonstration on the tennis courts would be a wonderful thing. I am across the street from the tennis courts and there are many, many hours when they're not heavily used, not used at all. And many times, there's no one out there right now, but. A quick demonstration to see if there's interest in the town. I mean, we should use our facilities to greatest advantage to the greatest number of residents and.
Well, hold, hold your firing power. You bring that to the council meeting, so.
Yeah, I will say the basketball court is underused, to say the least. There is at the moment, sitting on the basketball court, a bench. Which is not conducive to playing basketball, I assure you. And I'm just fascinated to see how long the bench stays there, actually.
I have no idea who put it there.
Maybe we should dedicate the bench.
Well, I'm glad that Councilor Bar brought up the idea. That the council should approve the opening because technically, I, I don't, I don't think it's open.
Yeah, well, I think we, can we get that on the July agenda that are part.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you. The next item for discussion tonight is the National Night Out.
Hey, Steve, I believe Matt also wanted you guys to approve the lawyer. Looking into the question of ownership.
Okay, Madam Chair, again, this is a work session for the council.
I saw that on the.
Ask later.
That's on the agenda. That will all be part of the conversation next session.
Okay, great, thank you. Still learning my ropes here. National Night Out? Yes, Kabir?
I was waving goodbye to Carrie.
Oh, okay.
Say that again, say that again. National Night Out, but what are we saying?
So, this is a. Understand, an event in recognition or support of local law enforcement. And we have, the town of Somerset has been invited to participate this year. I don't recall whether or not we have been invited or participated in previous years. Matt, can you provide some background?
Yeah, this just came through. To my knowledge, I don't think it's something that the town has done in the past, but. The community relations folks with Montgomery County Police had passed along the flyer that I had attached for you and. Was hoping that the council would consider some small event or recognition of National Night Out. Which I think they enumerated a few of the goals for it, but.
I think that over the years, we've been sort of casually invited. As have all the other municipalities, but I think this year, the, the police, the Montgomery Police has gotten more organized about it. And so I think it's, I think it would be good if we.
Could we, could we share this with Public Safety Committee and ask them to recommend to the council whether we should?
What time is of the essence, though, because I think they need to. I think, I think he was going to do that, though, right, Matt?
Yeah, I asked you to forward it. I don't know if they've had a chance to look at it yet.
Yeah, we, we have, we have time, and actually, I think the Public Safety Committee is going to meet in the next. Week or two anyway, so I think.
We can be in at the council meeting.
That was your.
Yeah.
I want you to know that when we were meeting about this agenda, your president made that exact suggestion.
Excellent. But one clarification, you, the town hall will organize an event or. They will organize an event at our venue. What, the specifics were a little fuzzy to me on what it is that we are.
We'll get that info for you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great discussion again. Next item covers a bunch of topics of concern. Somerset Town Pool. Looking at food trucks, tent, pool cover, pool deck repairs. So this is questions of policy with regards to food trucks. And. Cost funds with regards to tent, pool cover, and pool deck repairs. Matt, can you provide some details?
Sure, I'm not, okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't muted there. So the first is, as, as Council President Circa said. 2018, the swim team was granted. Authority for that summer to have food trucks at the town pool throughout, throughout the summer and. And I think the pool committee was also included in that, so on, on Friday evening. Sorry. Okay, so on, on Friday evenings, there was often, I think Rockland's BBQ came, came through, things like that. And it, the, the practice sort of continued.
But first, you need to say that food trucks are illegal in the town, right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yeah, I believe our code, our code does require a permit for block parties and the rental of. Food trucks and things like that.
Let me just give a little history that, so over the years, there have been residents that have wanted us to invite food trucks. As they've become popular, you know, there is a lot in Friendship Heights now, there's a lot in downtown Bethesda. And there have been suggestions about us inviting food trucks into the town. They're not legal. So then, so then, a few years ago, I see Councilmember Condos is on the line today. I believe she proposed that we have this exception for the, the swim team at the pool, and that's all good. And, and, and I don't think that the law has been violated very much, except during the pandemic. I know that a food truck has appeared at the Somerset Elementary School a number of times, and I've gotten calls of complaint about that. And so I think that it is time for the town to decide, the council to decide. What is our policy going forward? Because otherwise, we would be required to. Give fines to the people to do it or enforce it in some way. So at some point, the council is going to need to decide, you know, what do they want the law to be?
Has there been any complaints about the food trucks at the pool?
Three things, Council President Circa and fellow council members. I'm wondering, items two and three on Matt's memo are within budget. So I'm wondering, would they be on the consent agenda since they are within budget? Or do they even need to be considered by the council? So that's one question. Question two, on the food trucks. I have some insider information because my wife is on the swim team. I think there's a timing, there's some events being planned. So that was not in your memo, Matt. So if there's a timing issue, I guess we should know about it. And we should look at it with that context in mind. And then, fourth is, is the, the big, the big Kahuna, the big ticket item, which is the concrete repairs. And I think we, we discussed that last time. I think we need an understanding of timing, we need an understanding of full budget. We need a bunch of pieces, and I just wanted to flag that again. And that would probably not be on the consent agenda, would be my proposal.
Correct.
Can we go, can we go back to the food truck questions, which is, have there been any complaints?
Wait, before we do that, Debbie, are you, are you okay with two and three not being, or being on the consent agenda? I don't know what others think about.
Well, I don't know.
Because it's not, it's within budget. Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what you put in your memo. If it's part of the pool management teams. Do we need to even discuss it? But if you need to discuss it, can it be on the consent agenda? Would be my proposal. So we focus on the stuff that requires us to sort out the issues.
Well, I think the, the food truck issue is, I don't know, is ready to be resolved tonight, except for. If, if. As the town manager points out, if, if the. If there's no authority for the swim team to have these food trucks at events that have already been planned, then that knee exception needs to be put. food trucks at events that have already been planned, then that knee exception needs to be put on this agenda.
That's what I'm, that's the, that's the.
Now, like, I don't think tonight you're ready to ask for the town attorney to write a new law on food trucks.
I think we've always let them do it though, Jeffrey. We have let them do it in the past. So the questions to be asked in terms of going forward is, have there been any complaints? Has there been a rodent problem because of it? And if there's no.
Well, those are the questions you'll ask if it's on the, I, all I'm saying is that it needs to be on the agenda for.
And, and what exactly? And I think what you're.
But yeah, and those are all the questions you want to ask at the meeting.
Okay.
But I, I don't think tonight, I, I wanted the council president to how it start the discussion because, uh, so that you're all thinking about what is the future for the food truck law in the town? Because it is being violated, and, and it is being violated, and uh, residents, some residents have complained about it. And also, it's possible that, you know, unless something's done, that we might get a whole influx of food trucks in the future. So, so it's just to be prepared for that. And I don't really have a view on it right now, except I'm definitely in favor of making an exception for the swim team.
Can, can we then, please, again, so item one, you're saying we focus on the exception for the swim team events, and that'll be part of the agenda. Once again, items two and three, they're part of the budget. You know, do we need to, how do we consider them? And then I would love to focus energies on item four with, with a lot, with a lot of helpful background information, Matt.
My, my understanding of overapproved budgets is that budget approval doesn't guarantee that funds will be authorized. We have to have approvals of funds.
Right, you have to. You have to authorize all these expenditures, right?
That makes sense, okay.
But you can put it up, you can put it on a consent agenda if all of you agree to that.
That would be my proposal, but I'm happy if you wanted to debate it, of course.
So the, the tent, are we talking about repairs or complete replacement? Cause there's a big difference in cost.
How do we figure out what's the best way to go on that? You know, does it make sense to buy a new one, or should you just repair it again? I don't know how to make that decision.
The, the, the pool management, uh, team reviewed that with, with, with Matt Zaff and the pool management company. And indicated that the tent is old and repairs probably wouldn't help it last many more years. So I think the, the, my takeaway was that it's, we should be planning to get a new tent in the near future. But does that mean immediately? I, I, it wasn't that clear to me.
Well, don't, don't they say it would only last another year? Meaning.
Right, the ten is twenty years old, and I think it's a lot of money to spend for one year.
I agree.
Right, for the repairs.
And, and I, and this item really should be in the long-term capital budget anyway.
That, that's what I was thinking. For the ten.
I have no concerns about replacing the tent, let me put it that way. I think that's the right decision.
So I guess for the, the consent, I, consent agenda, I would just recommend adding the pool cover at this time. Cause I think we need to look at the capital budget for the tent.
On scope.
I agree.
And pool deck repairs, I think you're correct, Kabir, that we, there are a lot of unknowns here, that we need some answers or some additional insights in order for us to, uh, make a decision.
And I have a, I have a plea there. I would, it would be, it would make, uh, the council's job a lot easier if there's a consistent proposal from the management team. I believe there's a management team and from the pool committee on what needs to happen there. And that we have a clear, like we have at other things, we have a clear proposal, that we can then debate on the financials and not on the direction.
Right.
Typically, the pool committee wouldn't really weigh in on, do we need to redo the concrete? Cause they don't have all the information. It's the management team that gathers the nitty gritty on that information, and then they make the recommendation. So they don't trip all over each other, and it's more seamless.
Yeah, the pool, the pool committee is really regarding the functioning of the pool, the enjoyment of the residents, not you know, we don't want to put those, those, to burden them with those kind of decisions.
So it's just.
To you, it's up to the five of you for that.
But it's up to the management team. Okay, great, great.
And, and at the management team meeting, the most recent management team meeting, the first one I've attended in my new position. Some of the questions, there, there was agreement that like, was it Matt, a third or a quarter of the pool deck needs to be repaired, needs to be replaced. But another large section of the pool deck is in poor condition. So the two big questions that the management team had, and I guess folks are working on it. Between, like, the pool management company is, is investigating, is is there a cost savings in doing all of the deck at the same time? Does that make sense for us to just bite the bullet and long run we're saving money? And when do we need to do these repairs? Can we do them? Do we have to do the repairs this October? Could they be done in November, or could they be done next April? And, and we need some answers, I think, before we can authorize anything here. But, but I think it should be on the agenda for the council meeting. Hopefully we'll have some answers by then.
And it would be great if what we're discussing is the proposal, is what I'm trying to say, is not, we're not trying to investigate the issue.
Right.
But also, I think Councilor Frank has, he had a concern. Is that why you're raising your hand and you're, and you're muted?
Back, you need to turn.
Jack, you're muted.
I can mute it.
Very sorry, I was coughing. Um, it goes back to what we were talking about before, about a whole procurement policy. And core competence, the sort of pool committee is not on concrete. Uh, should we go out to concrete companies and say, we have this giant pool deck? Uh, what do you recommend? You're the expert in concrete. Um, do we have to replace the whole thing? There are like parts of it, but, uh, this is much bigger than a swimming pool company.
Yeah, that's, that is, that is the que, that is. That's why it's here, and, and, uh, remember, we gave you the history, which is, you know, we don't have a procurement policy, which means it's totally up to the five of you. Secondly, that historically, I think on the few times that we have gone out for different bids on a, on a improvement there. We always found that the pool management company that we were using was the cheapest one. But that's just the information I'm giving you. It doesn't mean, I think it would be better to, to bid it out. But I just wanted to give you the history so you can decide.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, Jack, cause it's a substantial cost. It's like sixty thousand dollars just for the initial section that has to be replaced. Is the es, is the one estimate that we have.
I believe it's ninety, ninety thousand.
I thought it was fifty-five. And it was like.
There we go.
Whatever it was, maybe it was like sixteen minutes.
Significant.
Yes, right.
Well, buddy, all right, okay. Um, so we'll see what we put together, might not actually have a specific package to vote up or down on. Um, I'll, I'll work with the mayor and the town manager to see how far we can get before the next, uh, council meeting. But that's a great lead in to the next topic, procurement policy. Um, we don't have a current policy. We should have a current policy, something that at a minimum directs. So this is just my personal opinion. This is what we can talk about for a few moments here. Um, we're in good, good position schedule-wise. Um, we, we should have current policy that establishes thresholds for which competitive solicitations are required. And I would think current policy should also maybe establish a cap under which the, the town manager can just take care of things. You know, if there's, if, if we need to buy a new bench because an old bench has fallen apart and it costs less than five hundred dollars. I would hope that we could just authorize the manager with a current policy, just allow him to take care of that, as a for example. Um, and diversity and inclusion. Maybe our policy should talk about small businesses, minority groups, uh, et cetera. Um, so I don't know.
Fully.
Yes, occasion to, to weigh in. What, what do folks think? And then how do we go about doing it?
So, so wait a minute, one thing I need to add before you talk is that, uh, our town manager who has a masters in public administration, does have the ability to draft a procurement policy, to, you know, a draft, if that's what you want.
So I wholeheartedly agree.
And I'm sure the town attorney does too, but of course we have to pay him for that.
Sorry, go ahead, Debbie.
No, I was gonna say, it was a great idea to task Matt with, um, with coming up with a proposal for us to consider. He probably doesn't, doesn't have to go far. There are other town municipalities around us that probably have procurement policies that he could borrow from. Never reinvent the wheel, I say, Matt. So, um, I think we should ask.
I, I think he wrote, didn't you write one in your old position?
Martin's edition, let's just copy paste.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you, you will improve on it, cause we need to have a better one.
Of course.
Okay.
Now, question I have procedurally, Steve, will this be part of the agenda, or are we saying for the next working session, we have a draft so that it's on the subsequent agenda?
I, I, I think I'd, we could probably do it either way, but I think I, I'd recommend a draft for the next working session so we can spend this type of open discussion that we can't really do readily in a council meeting.
Agreed.
Yes.
Okay, it, it sounds like there's agreement that path forward. Thank you for volunteering, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay.
Voluntar, he wasn't. It's part of his job, part of his job.
The next item is, is a slightly camouflaged agenda, uh, topic, service recognition. Specifically, what we're talking about is recognizing the many, many years of dedicated service by uh, the three council members who recently retired from service. Um, Marnie Shaw, Barbara Zoichhauser, and Franny Peel. And um, I think it's, it's appropriate for us to, to recognize it, cause it's many years of service. I'm already starting to think. Uh, you know, two terms, that might be enough, but, uh, they, they put in many, many uh, terms and, and really cared a lot about this town. Um, we, we bounced, we did a little bit of brainstorming in a, um, in a, in a preparatory meeting, we, we being, uh, the, the mayor and the town manager, and there are some opportunities like, um, the assembly hall in the new town, in the, in the restored town hall, that some of these council members were very actively involved in restoring. We could name that hall after them. Um, we could, there, there's the trail behind the pool, we can aim that trail after one or all of them. So this is an idea. What do folks think?
I'm always into a plaque myself.
Oh yes, there'd definitely be a plaque.
Oh, but no, I, I was wondering if we can't think of something creative, where we have some sort of commemoration wall that we put people that have given us, you know, a really, you know, long service, they go up on the wall. It's kind of like, if you've been to a synagogue and they have all the deaf people up there, I don't mean that, you know? But, but something that it's just, it's, we don't have to be creative.
Well, we have net, so the only thing we have like that now is we have the, um, the photos of all the previous mayors. And, and we, let me just tell you what we have in the town in that way. So, the, the the meeting room is named after Mayor Bear, the tennis courts are named after Mayor Bear, and the, and the roadway is named after Mayor Bear. And the, I don't know how, the, it, it was nineteen eighty-two, the Mayor Bear that they named the, the hall after him, and I think that's when he lost the first time, and they named it after him. I named the tennis court, you know, there was no policy, so when I became mayor, I named the tennis courts after Walter, and we got the stone and everything, but we had no procedures, and I just did it, okay? And then when, um, Mayor Bear passed away, the council voted to name the, the street along here, Bear Way. Okay, we have a bench at the, um, pool named after the late grade council member Alan Proctor. And another thing that I did is that I named the, um, the for, the office downstairs, which is now the office here. This is the mayor's office slash Judy Frankel Conference Room. And then, of course, Capella Park is named after a previous mayor, and I, I think that's it.
For the, the founders park too, right?
Is that right?
And Vinton, Vinton Park is.
Park is named after a former mayor, but Founder's Park is not named after an elected official, and that's what we're talking. That's the impression I need. I don't think there's any other elected official that we, that anything's been named after.
I think, I think, I actually think, um, Capella was the clerk treasurer for, for many years in the forties and fifties.
And maybe the founders, I, maybe some of the founders served in the capacity, I don't, I don't recall, but, but, um, I thought it would be nice to name, to rename the hall, the meeting room, the Zoichhauser Peel Hall or something like that, Gallery, cause it's also an art gallery. And Councilmember Zoichhauser was a huge advocate for the shows that we had. And then, and then I thought it would be nice, but I, I don't want it to be about me, I just threw these ideas.
No, this is a great idea.
I, I thought it would be nice, I thought it'd be nice to name the road between uh, Warwick Lane, the road between here and Drummond Shaw, you know, Marnie Shaw Lane, but that would be, we'd have to get the permission from Drummond and all that mess. And then I think your president's idea was to name the pathway between the pool and Friendship Heights after Council President Shaw. I think that is a lovely idea. In addition to what Councilmember Helen was saying about a plaque and all this, you know, we give them the photo and we, we give them a plaque, but I, I think it would be nice, especially that we don't really have anything named after women, except this unofficial room here after the late grade Councilmember Judy Frankel, so, but it's really up to all of you to decide.
My, my husband had suggested we name the speed bumps.
After former council member Kathy Picar.
One after the other.
I support the idea.
That is horrible.
Only joking.
And we're being recorded, and that should be, that should be struck.
Throw me out.
I support the idea of honoring them in a favorable way.
All right, sorry. You have to have a, you have to laugh, guys, okay?
That was funny.
We, we, we have to, you're right.
We should name a speed bump after Debbie at the same time.
I was never in favor of those speed, speed bumps. You don't want to do that.
It, I mean, obviously this is, will be a wonderful thing. I don't know if there's a recommendation from Jeffrey, Steve, and Robin who've served with them on what would be.
Yeah.
You know, the best way to do it, you know them well, you know, you work with them, so, I, I mean, it sounds the right thing to do, and it would be great to have it on the agenda.
Okay, so, so it sounds like there's general agreement for this. What I can do is work with the mayor and the manager and sort of fine tune the recommendation into something that can be a motion that we could vote on at the July meeting.
And if, I mean, if, if Marnie can be given a little bit more, maybe Marnie Shaw way is the right way to do it, because she was the council president and did a whole lot.
That does involve, that, that involves, uh, cause you know, that's a, a street, a, a county street. It's not a county street. It's not that the county, I, I, I forget how that works, but I think. I I forget how that worked, but I think we would. I think we would have to get the permission of Drummond to do that. So I'm just putting it out there, it's whatever you all think, you know, it's whatever you all think.
Think you should make it not too difficult, so I would probably go for the art gallery. Kind of put a plaque up for them.
Is the.
And I think that.
Is the pool named after anyone?
The pool itself, yeah.
The Zoichhauser.
But they don't really have, I don't know that there's really a connection.
Oh, there's.
Between, I I don't think there's, is there a connection between?
I shouldn't be recommending what what it is, I'm full support of this. I'm all for it.
Everybody's view is important and. I don't think that the pool.
Very bad at naming things, that's what my children say, so I'm 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 all I'm all all for you guys.
And they don't like their names, okay?
If if folks have any specific brainstorming ideas or recommendations, please feel free to forward them directly to. Matt, the mayor and myself. And we'll we'll try and handle this out, I do think that. Being timely is important on this. I mean, as opposed to dragging it out, okay? We are doing well on time, what I want to spend the next few moments on is council initiatives and. And other areas of of interest. Basically, what what I'd like to suggest here is. That I that I think the council should be more than just a reactionary body that responds to. Issues or complaints or suggestions raised by. Various committees, I think we can also. Have a a vision of how we can, you know, help keep Somerset a a special place to live and a. And there's a special community feeling here. And. And we and we can sort of lay out. A plan forward of various topics that we want to consider. And how we want to introduce them to the town for town debate or participation. Examples that 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 come to my mind, I I've heard some people in the town talking about voting rights. We could, as a town, for example, lower the voting age for town elections to residents who are. Sixteen years old and older. Something like that could be, I think, a a great topic for us to consider. And another example is HVACs and the the previous council. Talked about that HVACs, heating and ventilation, air conditioning units, heat pumps. There's there's a county code that deals. With with HVACs and for a variety of reasons, in the past, the town has in its code. Very strict requirements on any replacements of HVAC units. But but my sense is that some of that code is dated. And it refers to when. These units were. Energy inefficient and noisy and bothersome. But typically, these days, units are energy efficient and are much quieter than older units. So the the idea that the previous council worked on and that the town lawyer, town attorney drafted a. Code revision for. Would be to make the. The the, sorry, to step back for a moment, the way the current regulation works, any. Installation or replacement of an HVAC unit has to come to the town council. For approval, in an emergency, the American Grant interim. Interim rights, the cells to come to the council for approval after the fact. But it seems to me as an example of how we can streamline things and give us, give the council time to focus on more. More substantial issues, more substantial topics. And and in situ, in in situ HVAC replacement. That. You know, it's in the same location, it's the same size and strength. I don't think that needs to come to the council for approval, I think we could just have. The manager handle it as administrative manner. So it's not for us to. Discuss the merits of those right now, but I want to get this across as examples, what I think of are. Initiatives we can work on, and I'd love to hear what other folks might be interested in. So I'll toss the hat around, anybody else want?
Well, um, I mean, there's the agenda item that I'd hope to be on today's meeting that isn't, which is the American Rescue Plan money that is coming to us in. Near future.
Perfect, perfect.
It's going to be approximately six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, in the first year and then another six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in second year, there's some running or there. And so what are our priorities in spending this money, it's something we we should be talking about.
Absolutely, that's that's a great example. Probably something that we should have as a specific agenda item at our next work session so we can really spend time on it.
Well, Robin, the reason, Councilmember Bar, the reason why I suggested that that be delayed. In terms of the discussion at a work session is because. We we still don't have enough information on what the parameters are, so so. I think that's definitely, probably by the July meeting. There will be that information, but right now we don't, I unless Matt has. Do you have more information now since last week?
Well, MML is, um, it's hosting a forum on it that I can forward to the council so any. Anybody from the council can can join that if they wanted.
I'm registered for it already, I I mean, it. There's been a lot of guidance given already, uh, the. I talked, uh, it's some of us in town know a lot about it, I will say, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's it's fun, I think it's fine. To set priorities and then be be, because obviously you can't make it, the council can't make any decisions.
No, we.
So I mean, why don't you throw out, what are your, maybe you should throw out what your priorities are based on what you know are the parameters?
Well, right, okay, I mean, there are two. One. There are restrictions in how the funds can be spent. One set of funds, it's tighter on COVID. But there's an exception there if you have lost money from your budget in prior years, and there's a formula for estimating. How much of that money? You lost, then freeze up a certain amount of your funds be paid for any purpose you associated with recovery in your budget. Separately.
So, so is that something that the town can apply for when once that starts?
We don't need to apply for it, there's a formula that you use to calculate it, um, and that's in the guidance.
May I make a suggestion, sorry to interrupt, may I make a suggestion, I. I would love to hear from all the council members on on Steve's call. At the at the highest level, sort of, do we, you know, sort of, are we aligned on, or how do we feel about the statements he made? At the highest level, it'd be great to hear from everyone, and on ARP, I'm wondering, Robin, what do you think if you sort of gave us guidance? On the broad parameters and then all of us come with our ideas at the next working session.
Right, well, that's what I was just trying to do. So think of it this way, maybe slightly over half of the funds we get. Can be used for almost any purpose. The remainder of the funds have to be used for either COVID related reasons or. Broadband. Or stormwater or other water initiatives, so really stormwater is sits there as the eligible use for us. So. That's in, that's the structure. Um, and that is to think about it in that structure and obviously stormwater should be one of those things because. That money is is absolutely aimed at it, but the the rest of the money there is is.
But isn't it true, though, that, okay? Once we get the money. Then the council's gonna have to vote on all these.
Oh, yeah.
All these things.
Of course.
So. So is there any reason that we would, that the council would set priorities now, or isn't now just the time? For you to help clarify what we can. Use the money for, I I don't, I don't.
Is that I want the council members thinking about what your priorities are. Um, and certainly talking to residents also. Because money's gonna come, it's on a timeline for our spending that we are supposed to have it spent by the end of two thousand twenty-four. And so we need to make decisions in good order in order to to achieve efficient spending of the money.
Is it an OMA violation if Robin, Jeffries and Ron send us a note sort of laying out the parameters? As he understands them and then based on.
As long as you don't all talk about it.
You won't talk about it and then we will, we will bring our ideas at the next working session.
I'll try to do that, okay? Perfect, thank you, thank you for, thank you for raising an important topic, and that's exactly what I was looking at, we need to rely on priorities.
And then I would also assume that whoever is going to be the liaison to the Budget Committee will be the one who. Really is like the leader on the council for this.
Yeah, that's that's another topic, Steve, by the way, liaisons.
Yes, we'll get to that.
I add my support to Steve's statement, I think it would be great if we can be. More than just a reactive body, we have, we have to react to the realities of our town, but I think we have been entrusted. With shaping potentially in some ways the future of the town, and I think we have the ability to do that. And so I I support almost all of everything you said there, Steve, I mean, as you know. Lowering the voting age, I think making it possible for non-residents, for non-citizens to run for council. It could be another structural shift we can make, I I like the environmental committee's ambition for hundred percent. Electricity build, sustainable sources, that would be fantastic. We can chart a course in that direction, I think it would be great to. Create the mental space on this group to be able to tackle those issues, and I think. If we can get the partnership from the town hall. On issues like HVAC and elsewhere, I think we can then have that mental space to do that and we would. You know, I think that would go a long way, and on HVAC, I believe I would advocate for that being on the agenda for the next session. Let me put it there because there's already an ordinance, draft ordinance, Ron can correct me.
I think it would, I think you would have to be reintroduced.
Reintroduced with with the updated ordinance. I would advocate for that, but it's it's towards the end of our time, so maybe we 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 feel drained to talk about it, but. I would advocate for that, I think it's summertime, there HVAC updates, the residents will thank us. For a clean up process.
Well, well, I believe as we discussed in orientation, if. If, um, well, it's already been drafted, so if two of you want it. What what's the, what's the correct answer, Mr. Town, so if two of them want to put it on the agenda. Then all it would take is three of them to approve introducing it, right?
That's right, Mr. Mayor, but the ball is in my court to revise the draft.
That's what I thought, there's just a small tweak that's required, right, something to do with. Preserving the language, there's no conflict.
Okay, so I guess the question is. Would you have that ready? To be introduced on July?
Yes.
Six.
Yes, that's.
So then if two of you want to put it on. We'll put it on.
Perfect, thank you very much.
I have a question, Steve.
Yes.
Going to you, you, you're, you're, your question about creating things, is there a list? You know, a wish list from past, past years. Of projects that people wanted to work on but never got to, that might be, this might be a good time to share that list so we can. Reimagine it or or take hold of it, you know, like the HVAC is a great, is a great example. What, is there anything else, and I I don't, I don't need to put you on the spot at this moment, but if there is such a list, it'd be great.
There isn't. There isn't a written list, but I can tell you that one thing that's been on there, you've already moved forward on, which is procurement. That has been on there. That has been on my wish list for thirteen years. So congratulations. By the way, I'm incredibly impressed with the way your president is running this meeting. And how well prepared you all are, okay? Another, another issue that has been on a wish list in the past is to clarify our sign laws. And to, and to look at all the, there, there's been talk over many years about the. Proliferation of signs in the town. And and sign pollution, and then there's also in terms of the enforcement. We don't really enforce the sign law, people don't really understand what it is and on and on and on, I mean, for example. There are a lot of people that put. All kinds of signs in the right of way. And and others say that that causes, uh, it is a traffic hazard and we don't enforce it, okay? Another request that's been made in the past is that we require a permit for someone to put up a. For sale sign for real estate. So there's a lot, so this is something that has been sort of on the table for many years.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I have to leave, so talk to you guys later.
Okay, thank you. Stay, stay well. So that's one, another, another wishlist item, of course, and this is something that. Councilmember Kumar asked me about recently is, of course, the, the, the new street lights. And that's an ongoing thing and and. So I think that's still, that that's something that is on the, an agenda, right, Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, that's right, uh, in fact, the Public Safety Committee, I think, has a working. Task force group that's looking into that issue.
Okay, and then I think that the. So, uh, another way to create this list is to go committee by committee. So for example, the, as you know, which was mentioned in orientation, the. PNRC is talking about. A reform of the code regarding. Tree replacement and and the. The the approval for the the permit and all that, so that, that's something. The. You know, the Environment Committee has a lot of stuff on there. List, the. Okay, what about some of the other committees? You veterans, Robin, aren't there some other things committees you've?
Yeah, Communications Committee, History Committee, how many do you want?
Well, yeah, well, but, but I don't, I'm not sure, the History Committee, okay, so another thing on, and and another topic. That needs to come up, it needs to be worked on is the review of the town hall. Usage rules and regulations. For usage. And then, of course, there's always the, the, and I think this is something the Councilmember Barr has brought up before about reviewing all the. The permit, the fees for everything.
Yeah.
Who reviewed that recently, I thought?
But I think you decided something on, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So I don't think there'll be any, I don't think there'll be any problem coming up with topics for future work sessions.
I took note of all of that and I will circulate it to.
I I I was writing them down too, that was a a good, good capture. There are two other items I'd like to add to the list for us to think about. One is sort of a. A philosophy or a vision of. Uh, strengthening the role of our committees, trying to make our committees more vibrant. Um, I've had some brief discussions with the mayor and I think he's, he's. Exploring having the committee chairs come in and talk to us on a rotating basis, I think that will strengthen their role. And I think we can. Look for opportunities to. To shift some of our discussions and decision making to committees as much as possible. We might still have to make final decisions, but we can ask the committees to make recommendations for us. And that's just sort of a general statement to think about, lots of different ways to apply it. There is another topic that we voted on. At the council meeting last, at the June council meeting is Thrive Montgomery twenty. at the council meeting last, at the June council meeting is Thrive Montgomery 2050. That is an ongoing topic and issue. And I had a very positive phone call with some, some, some of the representatives at Town and Chevy Chase about their engagement. I think there there are ways that, you know, we we may not have voted in favor of the mayor's letter earlier this month. But I think we can still engage on this topic. And 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 we need to, but we also need to engage the town in this topic. Anyhow, so.
Okay, I thought, I, first of all, I, to follow up to what the president was saying, we are meeting, we are having a meeting with all of the committee chairs this week, which is going to be recorded. Okay, I thought of another issue that I would love the council to work on, which is the elimination of that unequitable sledding hill on Cumberland. I hope you will. That's something I firmly believe needs to be eliminated for many reasons. And then there's a, oh, wait a minute, I thought of something else. There's another issue, but I'll think of it in a minute.
I I actually have got a suggestion on that, which is at the same time, we approve a path running from, uh, the end of Warwick through to the county park on the Somerset side of the Fall Stream, which gives you access to the playground that is in the county park. Um, and it's so that we're taking something away from the kids and we're giving something to the kids at the same time.
Wait, are you saying friendship heights?
Uh, it's.
The Park and River Road, right?
It's Park and River Road, yeah. It's not really friendship.
Oh, that one, yeah, right. So that's a great idea, Robin. I've captured this list. We can and should update it as we go along. And I I guess my goal is for us to tackle a number of these every month. We might not wrap them up in any given month, but work on them.
Okay, so, uh, something else that has been ongoing, which has sort of been slowed down recently is, uh, there's a number of agreements between the town and individual residence easements and and all that that need to be reviewed. For example, I'm not sure that you all know that there's an easement at the town hall between the street and the what are the residents' names?
Oh, Mark Oxley, the Ox.
The Oxleys. And it's an, and it's an unclear, it's, it's not clear, there's there, and there, there's, there are easements all over town that need to be renewed or reviewed or so, so, and I, and I think, Mr. Town Attorney, I, I think that 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 the authority to engage you to do those probably needs to be approved, don't you think?
Engage, I'm sorry, what, Mr. Mayor? I didn't hear the last.
I mean, shouldn't there, shouldn't the council approve tasking you with reviewing all these rather than me? I I feel that it should be in partnership with the council that they.
Sure, yeah, I have a conflict of interest in answering that question.
Oh, yeah, of course.
That said, of course, I think.
So anyway, we can bring that up in the future.
Start it. Here's a a map showing all the the properties in the town and I'm starting to, you know, collect all the deeds and put them in a binder and once it's done, I'll make a copy for the town.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's, it's a great list to start off, um, this council for the next year.
Three.
We still have nine minutes left. There, there are two things I want to talk about. One is liaison assignments. And I confess, I've collected all of your inputs. Thank you very much. I've collected a little table and not surprisingly, there are some assignments that multiple people are interested in, others that nobody has volunteered for. And I did not receive an input from Jack because he's going to be heading out. And I haven't, I just didn't, I didn't finish my homework assignment, so I need to work on that some more. And I will retransmit to the council as a whole and then ask that you individually reply to me as I try to refine this. Because my goal, we, I'd like to have this in place for us to vote on in July. Because it's not fair to the committees to not know who their liaison is. We have a few minutes left. If we want to talk anymore about stormwater study, I I'm not sure it's sufficient time to really be impactful. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments on on that or anything else from this meeting?
I just think, just wanted to congratulate you, Steve, on running a great meeting and for being inclusive and getting everyone's thoughts on the agenda. I think it's very hard to do. So, well done. And it felt very collaborative and productive, so I'm very happy about this, very happy about landing. Admittedly, I am fading and maybe also ready for hun, for dinner, so.
Why don't you send?
To a great stormwater.
But you want to set a date for the next meeting?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council meeting is on Tuesday, July sixth.
It's better to have these meetings before the deadline for the journal, but it can be fudged a little bit. So so if you could have it before the seventeenth, that would be my advice.
So, so we look at Thursday, the fifteenth or Friday, the sixteenth.
We don't do Fridays.
Can't do Friday nights. I can do Friday afternoons, but I can't do nights.
No, 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 not Friday.
I think you decided that the meetings, these meetings were going to be at seven PM to accommodate those that are working full-time.
How about Thurs- Thursday, the fifteenth at seven PM? How about that?
I, I think I might have a personal conflict, but I have to double check with my wife on, sorry.
Martin's Editions meets that evening in case you needed me.
Wednesday, the fourteenth?
Oh, yeah, we need you.
How about Monday, July nineteenth? I realize that's a little late for the journal, but other than that.
That's okay.
It's hard because having the council meeting on July sixth is.
It's fun. Honestly, it's fine because let me remind everyone that the what is published in the journal is just a preliminary agenda anyway. So, and they're always changed, sometimes radically. So, so don't. It's better to do it, but it's not, uh, the rule in any way.
Okay.
I heard the fourteenth and the nineteenth, I can do it on both those evenings.
Okay, so the nineteenth at seven?
Is the fourteenth out? I like the fourteenth better, but I can do the nineteenth.
Oh, fourteenth. I can do the fourteenth.
Town and Chevy Chase meets that evening.
Okay, do that. And nineteenth then?
You don't want to have a meeting without your town attorney.
Right, right. Okay, so it's Monday, the nineteenth.
Monday, the nineteenth at seven?
Okay.
How can I help?
That was my Siri speaking to me.
She sounded familiar.
They're generous.
Okay. Great, thank you. And I know just for people's interest, the MML Summer Conference, virtual summer conference is Monday and Tuesday, July nineteenth and twentieth. A great opportunity to take some training classes.
And and we are registering everybody for that.
Oh, thank you. I was just gonna ask how to register. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much, everyone, for your good humor, solid participation. And have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Good night.